Temperature report. What are we doing today?
Not working.
Dude, no.
Just worry about your hot ass. That might actually make me hot. I'm afraid to touch the thermostat for fear of doing something wrong.
Okay, thank you for your patience. We are going to start it at 7:10 PM. We're still waiting for the doctor's orders. Call to order at 7:10 PM.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by our nation. I am proud in the physical.
Sue, come here. Here.
Lori.
Here.
Here.
Board member conflict of interest? No, turn it off. Public comment on agenda items? If you wish to say something, feel free to step to the podium. On the agenda items, if you wish to say something else, we can do that.
At the end.
No? Okay. How would comment on agenda items is closed? Do we have approval of the meeting's agenda? Okay, guys, on your mics, I see them here. Hello, can you hear me now? Okay, now. Okay. We have a motion on the table to approve the agenda. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the previous minutes. We have April 8th. I need to make a change to that. Okay, let's start there. Okay, so at the April 8th meeting, we discussed and approved a budget and moved to move 109,258 hours and 24 cents from the 101,000, 000, 390,000, 000, that's a general fund, to the 8,600, 000, 610,900, 000, that's a special assessment inter-fund transfer in, and it was never completed. So, probably need to be moved to the banks and the general and duties to be made to be done. Most of the meeting minutes. Yeah. Correct those meeting minutes. Yes, I think so. You may just stay up, we can't hear that. You still can't hear? You might have to coat these for our shirts. Great, scary. Oh, that's scary, though.
Long sleeves.
Yeah. Share this here. We don't, you can teach your voice. Okay, also, the April 8th, any other changes? April 17th meeting minutes. No changes? Okay. May 1st. No changes? No. Okay, so we need an approval to correct the April 8th. And approve the April 17th meeting minutes and the May 1st. We have that motion? I'll make that motion. We have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Reports, what, may I please? Here's my gun. May I please that the board's permission allows Steve Polk from Performance Engineers to go first, to give a sewer report? For those of you that have attended this sewer meeting, I appreciate it. For those of you who are not here, Steve will give us the quick one. Thanks. Come on up.
Good evening, Steve Polk from Performance Engineers. Excellent, good to meet you. How's that? A quick status update on how the contracts are going. The wastewater plant, they have one more concrete pour on the tank scheduled probably for next week. The first water for leak testing is starting to go into the biggest tank. Fortunately, as you know, there's no municipal water supply here. Normally, that'd be no big deal. Hook it up to the closest fire hydrant, start filling the tank. We gotta truck it in, brands be drilling itself on the path. The first two loads went in last night. Start to leak test the tanks. I don't want to give a date on when I think stuff's gonna be installed and the plant's kind of up and running. That's a big step, making sure we get these tanks leak tested. And that, and they are working on some of the blowers and getting some initial equipment hooked up. Elmer's has the gravity contract, a big milestone last week, Thursday, from 7:53 in the morning, the first truck, they were laying asphalt till about 7:30 that night. Forty-eight trucks, 717 tons of asphalt down. So, all the paving for their contract is done. They're gonna be working on restoration later this week and on next week. And they're just about close to being wrapped up. I've got about a two-and-a-half page change order drafted for them to close it out. It sounds worse than it is because most of those are deducts. A few of them are adds. When you do a unit contract like this, you know, so much per foot of this pipe, so much per foot of that pipe, so much for this much rock, et cetera. And right now, the needle is still in the black. And I have just about all the numbers done. And so, I think it's gonna stay in the black. I don't see anything blowing up. But when I do bring that change order either next month or the following month, that'll be to close their contract out. Matt's is chugging along over in the Columbus Beach Club. They haven't been as fortunate over there. It has been wet, especially they're working on Pier Avenue the last couple of weeks. They finally had to go ahead and put points in and start de-watering, you know, a day or two before they actually start digging out something. And it's, I know one of the residents, their big de-watering pump was right outside his house for over the weekend. So, it wasn't pleasant, but at least they got the pipes in. And things look better today. They're digging, soil looks a lot better. But there's a change order tonight to Matt's contract. One is a small item. We did not anticipate really crappy soils over there. We thought it would all be good. Pier, it has been pretty cruddy in there. So, we do have some undercutting that we need to put into their contract with that. I estimated it based on all of Pier, but after today, I think we're probably not, it's not gonna be all of Pier. But it's not a lot of money, so, yeah, I would recommend you just wanna approve that in case we get anything else on here, so we still have to dig that as well. And then, you'll see one for an AT&amp;T charge. Usually, we can negotiate this stuff away. I tried, and I tried on this one, I couldn't get it to go away. Because they hired a contractor to come in. Basically, what it was, a lift station on South Prospect there, based on what the lines were for the telecom, the gas, the power, all that stuff down there. We had a sweet spot where we could put that lift station. And they marked it out. And when we actually went to set it, it was so wet there, they had to use an extra bigger trench box. And we were probably about a foot short of having enough slack in the AT&amp;T cables that we exposed to get around outside that lift box. Matt's did the right thing, they stopped, they didn't just chop through it because then they would have, they would have to buy it, you know, repair it. We called AT&amp;T, they came out, and we said, "We really need this stuff now." So, they ended up hiring a contractor to move the line. We didn't know that they were gonna charge Matt's back for that. Matt's had blown through one of the junction boxes up on the Straits Highway last fall that wasn't really marked that well. AT&amp;T ate that because they admitted they didn't mark it as well as they should. I think that they might have had to do a little something new. In fact, they wanted to get a little bit back on this one. But I really tried hard to negotiate this one away. And they said, "Well, they hired a contractor. We can't, we can't just write this one off to our crew." So, it was 1,700 bucks, you know, and they charged it as a damage, but they didn't, they stopped first, but they didn't. Matt's has to pay that, and they shouldn't have, they shouldn't have to eat that. So, that's why I'm requesting that on the change order. So... As we stand, Phase 2, we're still looking at mid-July, starting the gravity section down there. And they have talked about maybe starting the low-pressure system on Stirk Island and the end of Barbara in the fall, if the gravity section went well. I'm not banking on that. I think they're probably gonna be starting the low-pressure one in the spring next year. But we'll know probably fairly early in their job how well it's going, that maybe there's a chance that they could start that low-pressure system in the spring. But I'm not banking on it. Any questions for me, especially on the change order? Because I'm not gonna be here long, you're actually...
I guess, so the change order, we, does Matt's pay for that?
Yeah, Matt's shouldn't have to eat that. They did the right thing, they stopped. We told them where to put it because we thought it was a good spot, thought there was enough room. And we missed it being a good spot by about a foot of slack in that line. So... And it's so wet down there, there was no easy way to do it. They end up going down to the Pennstone, which is a little bit south of where the lift station is. But that was the easiest place for them to terminate it. So...
What remains in our contingency for that Phase 1? Will that come out of the contingency law?
It will, but then, when these contracts come in with the needle in the black, then that goes back into their contingency. Right now, I'm tracking both contracts staying in the black.
Right.
So... I don't, the exact number I want to say is 188,000 in the contingency. But it was in the memo that I wrote, since I wrote that two weeks ago, so...
Right.
Any other questions for me on how the project's going, or on the change order, or anything else? 184.9 is what is currently in there. And this change order itself wasn't very good.
Right.
I think it was like $16,000 or whatever.
There was a question during the sewer meeting about where staging will be for the, in Phase 2. We've got locations targeted.
We've told the contractor that the township has designated Martha Street and also inside the airport fence, right inside the entrance there. This is curious, if they could use, if they wanted something closer to where they'll be working, we've put them in contact with a property owner that has three properties right down there. You know, talk to that property owner, he says, "Yeah, he will." Maybe cut them a deal. So, we'll see. I know, we don't want to ask the Marina, I don't want to get into MS. And I don't want to put you guys in the Devo Beach situation again either, so... So, that's what we're working on. Hopefully, they can swing a deal and get some stuff a little closer.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, I'm heading home.
All right.
I'll be back tomorrow, we'll meet you at the sewer meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, board. Bills and revenue expenditures. They have a total of 65 invoices in the amount of $49,170 in one thing. And then, the other thing I want to touch on in this part is the IRS numbers. If you look into the English register, there is an IRS bill for $848.83. $789.81 of that will spike the taxes because we have to go sell Mr. Kramer to wait until the 17th. We didn't consider that the state fight would need to be increased. So, $59.02 of that was penalty due in the bill. The rest goes by. But then, I got word today that there was an agreement, a settlement agreement. So, I will be issuing an amended W2 Mr. Kramer and I will amend the tax return to get those ones back in the taxes. And he also has the... Yes. I will be there. So, I'm here to let you know that we have 18 different accounts for the township between library funds and sewer phases and DDA. And of those right now, of the 18, 11 are up to date and recognized. Which I think that's not very much, but so many of the other ones are the third person. This is one one, just able to do. And then, and we're really close on taxing pool, which are so complicated to get those recognized because there's so many working parts and items in there, but we're so close. So, hopefully, by next meeting, we'll be all up to date and no worries. The pool account has $1,942.37.95. So, we're doing good. So, no worries like we had before. Correspondence? I have nothing. Anything else? Nothing. Airport. Looks at here. I'll address this. It's under Old Business, but I'll go ahead and address it now. If you recall, as you recall, back in January, February, we had Colton Snap and Weir Piper over at the airport hangar, so ask your questions. That, we submitted that claim to our insurance carrier. We had estimates, and that has all been approved now. The insurance is making full payment on that. There was a $1,000 deductible that was withheld for the night cleaners go, which was paid in April. So, that is underway out at the airport. That hangar restroom is being re-paved and rebuilt. And we checked, I can't remember, see, I asked, they didn't, the insurance company did do a depreciation withhold of, I think, in the letter, you see, a little over $2,000 once we submit our final bills. That too will be remitted to the township. So, that's happened at the airport. And we have cleanup day coming a week, September 13th. It's 1-0 here. Okay, so keep an eye on that. DDA.
Maybe everybody's noticed that we finally got all the poles pulled out, that we were supposed to get pulled out. The last part of this pole project to the downtown is the concrete floor for the replacement where we pulled the poles. That is supposed to be done, was formed up today, it's supposed to be done on Thursday. The only other project that we are working on right at this point is kind of making a plan for getting a pathway down from the school to Cooperation Park and maybe south, depending on funding and stuff like that. We're still just talking to people right now. I've done a walkthrough with a lot of the people, and everybody seems to be in favor of it. Couple little problems, but nothing major. And that's all we've got going on right now. Any questions?
No, but I wanted to add something to that.
Yeah.
You even haven't heard this yet. Back in January, I filed the 2024 annual report for the DDA. However, I had the email address wrong. Was not returned to me, so I didn't know that. So, when we received notice, I replied. I had the email address wrong again. So, we got a little threatening letter, but everything's been waived, everything. Because I sent from the very beginning. So, they knew I attempted to get this right back in January. So, we're all set with the treasury.
Oh, great.
And I will start, I have to start a recording in seven...
Well, once we get this closed up, we can finish it and close it down.
This has to do with the monies we get in and...
Oh, okay, I thought you were talking about... Okay.
Thanks, Deanna.
Yep.
For your request, we've got one. Library, Ms. Kelsey.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Hi. So, today we have a little presentation. It's gonna be a bit of a dipper for it. So, we're just kind of bringing attention to it. So, basically, the library is looking at forming a multipurpose outdoor reading garden. So, I wrote up a little explanation of the purpose behind it and kind of our vision. So, bear with me, I'm just gonna read that really quick. So, the Indian River Area Library has become a vital cornerstone of our community, establishing itself as a central hub for patrons to learn, explore, discover, and connect. The Indian River Area Library was formed in 1977 and has operated in the current Testora Township building since 1994. Over the past 48 years, the library has provided a wide variety of programming resources and support for the Indian River community, and currently serves 4,608 members of Indian River and surrounding areas. As the Indian River Area Library has evolved over the years, the organization has been limited to providing indoor space for its patrons. The library is now embarking on a new goal to expand our current resources and services to provide a multipurpose outdoor reading garden for the community to experience and enjoy. The outdoor community reading garden will be designed to meet a wide range of purposes and community needs. In general, providing an outdoor space can improve one's mental and physical well-being, enhance learning, foster a sense of belonging, and increase community interaction. The visual connection to nature has also been shown to boost focus, productivity, memory, and reduce stress. Outdoor spaces can also provide a welcome change from the confines of the indoors as a source of joy, inspiration, and a connection to the world around us. With the creation of an outdoor library space, the library would have the opportunity to offer a more engaging and interactive learning environment, especially for children, but also for everyone else. Programs could expand to include active participation in learning through hands-on activities like gardening, playing, outdoor games, and STEM and STEAM programming. Children can burn off energy outside in a safe environment, and they come into the library to read and pick up books. Overall, the purpose of expanding our rural public library to include an outdoor reading garden is to enhance community access to educational and recreational resources in a safe, inclusive, and inspiring environment. In a region known for its beauty, natural beauty, and strong seasonal communities, the outdoor garden will offer patrons of all ages a peaceful space to read, learn, and connect with others. This expansion addresses several local needs. It provides additional space in the library with limited indoor capacity. It encourages literacy and lifelong learning through inviting, nature-based studying, and it supports mental and physical well-being by offering a tranquil place for relaxation and reflection. Additionally, the outdoor garden will serve as a venue for seasonal programming such as storytimes, book clubs, author talks, environmental, educational events, as well as informal gatherings, fostering deeper community engagement. By blending the benefits of nature with the mission of public libraries, this outdoor reading garden will create a unique and vital extension of our library services, promoting accessibility, equity, and community enrichment in northern Michigan. And now, I'll move on to Karen.
Good evening, I'm Karen Hill, and I'm president of Friends of the Library. The library board authorized the Friends to form a garden committee of local residents. They pulled, the committee pulled their ideas together, sharing them with the architect who drew their concept up. And this is what you see behind us. The drawing before you is only a concept of the ideas that the committee presented to the architect. The committee has engaged a registered architect, and it's John Hill. And to be transparent, that's our son, he is working pro bono. John will present a final drawing of the garden when the current survey is completed. Unfortunately, until then... Unfortunately, until then, we cannot give you any bill dates, materials, cost, anything. As soon as he gets the survey, we will shortly after get a formal drawing, which will be presented to the library board for acceptance. But then he will do a cost estimate. As you know, we have to follow all of the federal and state requirements because it is a federal building. Now, here comes the fun part. The Friends of the Library are hosting their first garden fundraiser October twenty-first in Hummerley. You ready for this? August twenty-first, excuse me. It's bats, rats, beer, boats, and books, B-4. B-4 for an evening of fun. It's a variety of foods, music, all organized by Lisa McHugh, who is an event planner extraordinaire. The architect will also be there. The tickets are seventy-five dollars. They're available at the library, or you can contact me. All proceeds go directly to the building account. We hope you will be for a community reading garden by supporting this event. If you're not able to attend, please consider pledging. Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course, I'm also married. Is it black, white, or gray?
I do it too. But I don't know if it's white.
Isn't it right under the chair?
There was a phone on the ram, it's on this chair.
There was a what? No, I wasn't here. It's this. Okay.
Now, why do I always have to take care of you?
It's white.
It's brown.
It's brown.
Like this. Do I have glasses?
It's a little blue. Okay.
Okay, Parks. We are continuing to work on D-1B and Oakville Cemetery for the cleanup for the storm and for the, hopefully to get it all done before the summer. We have a travel baseball team will be holding a tournament at Cooperation Park July twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh. We will be starting to work on our budget for twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six. We are also looking to have a fundraiser, but we don't have, we're in the beginning stage. And we will be looking for two seasonal help and one full-time within the next couple of weeks. And that's it for us. And if you find my hearing, please do.
I can't hear shit. I'm going to excuse myself. Thank you. Okay, please.
Okay. We talked in the Zandals. Finally.
Good job.
So there's a few things I want to discuss with the board tonight. We currently, after we pay donor fund corporation for all the construction done and summit fire, when they finish up, I think they still have to go to the library, do some things over there, and then they will be wrapping this project up. When those two things are done, we should have about seventeen thousand dollars left in the community space. So with that being said, as you know, it's super hot here even tonight. We kind of reached out to Control Solutions. We had them come in, they commissioned the building. They found out that our guns are extremitable, don't communicate with our current controls. So to bring all of that up into working order, I actually had the guy kind of break it out into two segments. So they are ready to come in. Our air handlers obviously need a lot of attention. They want to do graphics, so the township will have access to their own heating system. The library will have access to their in-floor and their overhead. The police department will have access to their own heating. But that's computer software, so they got to go the graphics way. They want to come in and they want to go through our air handlers and bring all the data up to date. Replace the motors if they need to, make sure the motors look straight. All the air filters, motors, there's some sensors, some ductwork that needs to be replaced. All of that is going to be, the first phase is twelve thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Then they come over here and replace all the valves and all the M-tube and the in-floor heat analizer. Is, the grant total is actually forty-five thousand two hundred. After we pay the initial grant, we'll have thirty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars left.
Last two pages are here.
Yeah, I'm sorry, this should be, the proposal should be. Let's put it, sorry.
I'm sorry, what was after the seventeen and what's the remains thirty-two?
So it would be thirty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Divide that by each of the building, which is three ways, where it ranks down to ten thousand nine hundred and seventy-five. So they've given me the proposal. I'm just asking, and I've already kind of discussed it with Kelsey, she's on board with it. Police Department's on board with it. It's up to you guys now, I just need to vote. Do we accept this proposal? Do we budget for it this year and get this taken care of once and for all?
Remember, I spoke at least five years ago when we had two summers where we had to have window air conditioners, and that company supposedly fixed it. I know they did. Apparently, so.
So believe it or not, that company, when they came in and they did the boilers and they got us a top-of-the-line control system. Well, those control systems are still top-of-the-line. They just don't communicate with the valves. Are walls away? And they're thirty years old, we're with the original code.
And they didn't bother to say anything.
Right. So here we are, all these years later, with finding about our heating cooling system. And I think I finally have a company that is going to help us out, do the fix once and for all. I don't know, I looked on the agenda, I didn't actually see this on here unless it's under emergency expenses. No, that's something else.
Yeah. I'm okay with, do we want to make a motion based on Gordon's presentation? Or do we want to get questions, either way, ask?
We can't go all summer.
No, no.
Wait.
Well, and as you pointed out, so on page one, where it gets down to twelve thousand two seventy-five, phase one will still be covered under the grant. Yes, yes.
And that has somewhere that won't be cracked.
Another fighter. So. Yeah. We can budget that in. Yeah, we have to. We're nearly there, this is the long stretch.
It is, and we will in the next few months, it's a big.
So the question is, do we, is it okay to put this to make a motion based on this? Or do we put it under emergency expenses?
I see one reason you can't just make a motion
Yep.
to go with the library and the police.
And budget that in. Okay. So we have a motion on the table made by Sue to join the library and the police to budget the remaining cost of the control solutions proposal to finally fix our HVAC system. And that one is ten thousand nine seven. Where the second down there? A second.
Who's the second?
Me.
I just really don't.
Yeah. Good times, Charlie. Okay, all in favor?
I...
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
And it will be a decision. Perfect, thank you, sir. Okay. Old business, emergency pay. Okay, if you recall, if you recall, I brought to the board about emergency pay for our two office staff that were not able to work during ice storm. I did some research with our attorney, and it's in the board packet. And he agrees that negating the tender for their loss charges. There's a few things we have to do for a proper procedure. The board has to vote. Emergency documentation, the board's motion should state that pay is based on operational suspension caused by the ice storm, emergency, and then employees were unable to work through no fault of their own. Also, public purpose justification. The resolution should explain that the payment is intended to support the continuity of township operations, maintain workforce readiness, and protect our public interest. It's a one-time authorization. It should be clear that the payment is specific to this event and does not establish a continuing policy. And we have to have proper financial reporting. The action must reflect, must be reflected in a minute and the expenditure is properly recorded in the township financial reports. If necessary, the township should amend the budget pursuant NCL one four one point four three six. And so I'm going to read this word for word right here, so bear with me. I'm presenting a resolution to authorize emergency, or should we discuss it before we do? Okay. A resolution to authorize emergency administations leave pay for hourly employees who were unable to work during the ice storm emergency from March thirty-first through April fourth, twenty twenty-five. Township operations were suspended due to severe weather and safety concerns, and employees could not report through no fault of their own. This pay is limited to regularly scheduled shifts during the emergency period and is a one-time authorization. The payment serves as valid public, as valid public purpose by maintaining workforce readiness and ensuring continuity of township services. Under the Michigan Constitution and Supreme Court rulings, including advisory opinion on nineteen seventy-five P-27, an expenditure with a public purpose of lawful and not an unlawful gift. I move for the adoption of this resolution as designed. So that's the, do we need to have the read the resolution in its entirety? Or is that motion enough? I talk a lot. Okay, so, do you have a second?
I have a second.
And let's do a little call.
Sure, one, sorry. No, that's again, I know that we discussed this, that we were all in favor of it. But how many employees? It's two.
The one time?
Yep.
That's under the policy? In case this happens again, we'll have a policy in place. There will be no questions asked, it's just a one-time.
It's a one-time, it's a one.
It's a little funny how we're not figuring that next time.
There's time.
Right, right. That was the consensus that was still needed too, we can no more. John, did you have any concerns, comment?
No.
Old Paul, please, on page, so we can sue?
Yes.
Rudy?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Gloria, yes?
Yes.
Oh, John, I'm sorry. My bad. Motion passes. Resolution passes. Super.
That's for township police department.
So I guess I want to apologize, I guess I kind of pulled back. So we just got the contract, the drafted contract earlier this evening. So I guess I don't know. I can make a motion, we can discuss it, chew it down, so we can handle it. My explanation to that gives it enough merit to go on. We do have a contingent agreement. As compared to more improvement. Here's kind of the update and the changes. What was saying? I just would add that year twenty and longevity. It's lost fifty. So I guess I want to make motion to approve the Desper Township Police Officer, Patrolman, Sergeant contract for the years of two thousand twenty-five through two thousand twenty-seven. June first, twenty-five. July first, twenty-five, so June thirty-eighth, twenty-seven.
Or twenty twenty, it says twenty twenty.
Just figure?
Is it? Yeah. I thought it was a three-year. So you say it starts in twenty twenty-five, it ends in twenty twenty-six. And then the next one starts in twenty twenty-six, it ends in twenty twenty-seven. And that can start in twenty twenty-seven, ends in twenty twenty-eight. So it's a three-year, if you vote you through twenty twenty. Okay. Question? Well, motion, do we need a second? I can second that. I will second that.
Question? So the officers, I apologize. Do you have a first proposal? All right, so the first unit proposal was a wage increase for five percent each year. And then they wanted to add longevity pay. They had calculated five, ten, fifteen, and twenty years of service. Five-year request for a payout was a thousand twenty dollars per year for that five and nine years of service. Between ten years and fourteen years, they wanted fifteen, sixty per year. Fifteen to nineteen years, they wanted twenty B per year. And twenty-plus years of service, they wanted twenty-four ninety-six. They did that off of a cents per hour scale, fifty cents per hour, seventy-five percent. Seventy-five cents per hour, a dollar per hour, a dollar twenty per hour. Our per, counter to that was a three and a half, three and a half, three and a half wage increase. Four hundred dollar longevity each year for years of five to nine years of service. Eight hundred, or excuse me, seven fifty for ten to fourteen years. Fifteen to nineteen years, it's a thousand dollars per officer. Twelve fifty for twenty years. The Officers' Union, counter to that, was a four percent wage increase each year. Five fifty, a thousand, twelve fifty, fifteen hundred. And then the township's final offer was... The township's final offer was 4%, 4%, 4% wage increase. 500, 850, 1,000, 1250 for longevity. And just language clarifications, some cleanups. For health insurance. Full-time employees qualify for employer-provided contract insurance benefits after 60 days of employment, with the exception of, excuse me, relative across group coverage, the full-time employee will qualify for 60 days or the next enrollment period, which ever appears, excuse me, earlier. That's going to change to full-time employees qualify for employer-provided contract insurance benefits upon hiring. The employee shall be responsible for any additional cost of the insurance benefit. So what we added is additional costs incurred by the township. To new hire, that's straight out of the academy. The responsibility to catch you up for that insurance, living in the character of moving second insurance. Somebody that comes, leaves another job, comes here, obviously, there are insurance carryovers. Premium pay, excuse me, premium pays, I guess there was some confusion as far as Good Friday went. Employees shall receive a lump sum payment for holidays. Such payments shall be equal to eight hours' pay for each holiday listed in Section 12.0, except Good Friday, which will be paid, will be four hours. Payment shall be made by a separate check, probably the last payment of the year. Employees are required to work on a paid holiday as specified in Section 12. Shall be paid at a rate equal to two times the regular hourly rate throughout all the week of the holiday, except Good Friday, which will be four hours of pay for section holidays. Shall be given with the first shift schedule to start on the day and end 24 hours of labor. Except for this confusion. They should be paid eight hours of holiday on Good Friday, or four. Contract now will specify that it's four hours of holiday payment Friday. Yes, the law requirement changed casual leave follows as compliance with burn sick time act. The culture, it is only due October 35, or concluded June 30. And I just wanted to be known that I think it's important learning all of this, and there are such a lot of budget for the counties. The first part is fully funded, the five millage rate. That hasn't been changed over 60 years, as I understand it. Obviously, inflation, increased costs, increased costs, obviously, the millage rate fluctuates with the S and D. We are still with these increased wages and longevity, we are still going to be below the millage rate, five mils. If it follows the trend of how it's been going. In the final year, we should be, say, around 4.6 to 4.7 mils.
I have a question. Regarding the health insurance. Are, are the employees of the department able to add dependents and pay for themselves? Pay for their dependents themselves, or no? Is this only for the employee? It's not extended? Okay, so, if I'm going to the boards, and if you were my daughter, I would pay private, I would definitely give a full pay, correct?
Yeah, I agree with that.
But, but yeah, the township pays nothing for dependents, just...
No, it currently does. Yeah, it currently does with the police contract, the only, the...
Police officers pay 20%.
Yeah, they have a code, yeah, but...
Of the premium.
Of the premium.
But, yes, all, all, kids and everything up to, what is it, age 25, is that still?
26.
26, I think. Okay.
It's the upstairs. It does not include dependents.
What does that mean, upstairs?
Um, Doug?
Oh, got it, okay. I think they just wanted, this, you only put in here the sections that were changed. It's okay, so we don't have a contract, we just have a change. Okay. So I have a motion, and seconded, we can't discussion? Any more discussion? Shall we take a vote to approve this, these contract changes for the township police department? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Community rehab criteria. Let's figure.
As you know, the township looked through a resolution for tax payment, and there was no criteria put in. We had... voiced a thinking, you know? That criteria would be important. So, we had a small couple, few people who volunteered their times. And we presented to the board what we came up with. This is not reinventing anything. This is taking from other communities and putting in what we felt would be best for this township. There, it came to the maximum time would be eight years. Lot more time to look at this. I'm going to say that I was one from the very beginning that could not understand how you can go into this without any criteria whatsoever. So, yes, I was very interested in working on this.
That was the advice I received from Jeff Lawson at Shroyd County. That it's always good to have something to, to measure progress. One of the things that I don't, and I'm, it's probably in their sleep. Do we ask the developer to come back on an annual basis to give us an update on their project?
Well, we said that it will be reviewed. Reviewed every two years.
Okay, good.
To determine if the base and criteria are being maintained.
I, I think it's interesting, just so that the public knows, and it's, it should be, is it within packets? I want? Yes, okay, good. The committee addressed the number of full-time jobs, not full-time, not seasonal jobs. Wages. Incorporation of residential housing. Cost of construction for the new facilities and cost of renovation.
And it's possible with some of these, with the number of jobs, if they retained, wanted five jobs and then created more, they would get more points.
And it's a point system, I don't know.
It is a point.
So do we need a motion, or we need a motion to accept, adopt these community rehab criteria?
I'll make it.
In a second? And any further discussion or discussion questions, clarifications needed? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Oh, and I'm right, still rates. I guess just an update, more or less, it's a motion.
Currently working on coming up with the new rate, instead of just going ahead with the 6%. Doing a little bit deeper dive, looking into the last six or so years as to what we brought in, what the expenses were, and where we, where we fall. And I should be able to have something for everybody soon. I mean, it'll be a discussion. All I can do is present what, if, what we conceive. And then decide what type of increase we're going to have. Instead of just the, the, since the current ordinance is that it's the rate of inflation. And maybe we can do a little bit more deep dive into that class that Bobby took.
Oh, yeah.
That brings in... You put it in.
Alright, so again, just an informational, are you going to speed us where we are in that? Sturgeon statue. First of all, I want to apologize, I'm not trying to step on the women's club's toes with the sturgeon statue. This, I should have called it a new statue. Yeah. This is, someone help me out here, back when we did the Marina... It was part of the great, thank you. And if you've not been down there to walk along the rivers on the, on the opposite side of the parking lot, I encourage you to do so, because there are some kiosks down there that give you the history of the indigenous peoples and their use of our waterways, which I find very interesting and fascinating. But part and parcel to that was the permission to create a, the cricket tree, combined with a fish, which is a sturgeon. When Mr. Ben Hindman was commissioned to do that, and he gave us some photos and renderings and drawings. And when it came to going down there to the peninsula, it was decided that that was a little bit mushy. And so, there was going to be a huge creation below deck, so to speak, which I think kind of stopped the project. Since then, we have the, you've probably seen it out here for the south of the building, the huge piece of concrete, which we had a metal sculpture on, that has now gone back home, I believe. And Mr. Hindman came up and met with Doug and I a week or so ago. He was very excited about this piece of concrete that needs to be leveled a little bit. Doug will work his magic with his crew, and they will get that leveled. Also, Ms. Kelsey and the reading garden, that will be an access place, if you look at the picture. Here, this is, I'll read yours on. We have Great Highway, and you'll see this, this walkway, there you go, ma'am, there you go. Yeah, so...
So that's the main road there, I was just thinking, I should have talked about this. It'll go on the south side of the building. So then, this walkway here, coming out of the scene now, would be where the statue will be.
And, and we were explaining that to Mr. Hindman, brought him in to talk to me, Kelsey. They hit it off. They're already planning a celebration in late summer, early fall, working together with the indigenous community, the tribe in Potaske is very excited to partner with us on this project. That we're, I know you guys have been in communication about the celebrations, you have the statue placed here. So we'll keep you informed, it'll be very fun. We'll have, hopefully, maybe, maybe the garden won't be started yet, but maybe it will.
Yeah, there'll be a little ribbon cutting, ceremony.
Yeah. So he just thought it would be a nice way to marry the two projects. So, that's just an update, it's, it's in the works.
Did he say how far along he is?
Well, he, I'm sorry, I should have brought some pictures, it's, well, I'm not an artist, so I would say it's about halfway, but he did not state that. He, like, he just... Yeah. There is, we, we did pay a balance payment on the commissioning of the statue. There is going to be a balance due, we'll factor that into the budget. The, the balance due on the commissioning of the, the sculpture itself is $3,375 due upon completion. So that is our obligation. Just again, informational, on that. The airport, we talked about that, the check's been received, the work is underway. That's the good news with regard to insurance. Update on the wastewater treatment plant well pump. You recall that that died in the power outage, the ice storm? We did a quick, we did a short-term fix with Bransky Drilling. Phenomenal man, we are fortunate to have him in our community. He did a short-term fix out there with a pump he had on the shelf. We submitted it to insurance, they evaluated it, said, yes, indeed, it was due to the weather incident. Sadly, we have a $5,000 debt to them. So, it's not, yes, it's covered, but no, there's no money coming. So, we are still working on the legal aspect of this, so we can throw this in the mix. Okay, all business, does anyone need a pause to take a break? No, before you have her?
Yeah.
No, I do not. Popcorn, maybe, you should have had popcorn. Next step. Okay, new business.
Okay, so, BSNA approached us. Those of you that like to pay yourself online, that per yourself point and pay, and it's a little more expensive than BSNA's new product, the payment pricing. So you'd still go online and pay your bill. You, if you're paying your property taxes, you would only pay with your credit card 2.8% and 50 cents, which is less, not ton less, but a little less than point and pay. If you're paying your utility bill online, it's 2.95% with a 50 cent transaction fee. And then any other miscellaneous things that you're paying online, which I don't think we had, we had just those two. Now, if you're using your bank account, an ACH, you pay a flat of $3, up to $1,000. So a lot of people, you know, some people's taxes, that would just be a $3 charge. If you're, if you're paying up to $5,000, it's only $6. And over $5,000 is just $12. So it's a savings to residents. But this also gives us the opportunity to accept credit card at the counter. That. And also then, we're going to do a QR code that, those of you that have seen it, you just open up your camera's, your phone's camera, and it takes you to the website. So if you're at the boat launch, and you want to, you don't have $9 in your pocket to put in the boat launch, you can just scan that QR code. I'll also have the web address there, so if you'd rather type it in. The benefit to the township is when you make a payment, it immediately goes into our cash receiving BSNA, where that point and pay, it just randomly goes into the checking account, and then you have to then manually add that into cash receiving. And trying to reconcile the pool account with utility bills and the tax account with point and pay has been the major stumbling block. And trying to reconcile the pool account with utility bills and the tax account with point pay has been the major stumbling block. Because they don't like, you get a report, and it says, oh, on this date, you think you're gonna get this dollar amount. Well, sometimes it's that dollar amount in the bank statement, sometimes it's this one, and that one, and this one. And the amount of money we collect for taxes, you know, we have over $3,000, we haven't developed $3,100 to pay taxes. Here, utility billing is a lot less than that, but, so this will streamline that, and we'll get free in our bank account. And it's a little less for taxpayers, but it also gives us the opportunity for you to pay credit card at the boat launch, and also pay credit card here at the township. So that's why I'm hoping that we will agree to go with this new program. If it's approved, I, there's a little five-minute video that Chris and I watched, and I'm gonna upload that to the website. It's more like our point of view, but yet it kind of shows you as a user what you can do and how you can set up on your phone. So if you're interested, that'll be out there if it gets approved tonight.
Question? And I don't know if point pay from payment right now, this also says absorb by municipality?
And I was looking at, I was looking at that, saying, that is, and Chris and I were talking, because we met with BSNA and also Rachel, my deputy treasurer, she was with us too. And there is nothing mentioned about any kind of cost to us. So, but I will say, and I didn't have time to get ahold of him before the meeting tonight, just to clarify, because I had just had this that he gave me, and it says, by the resident.
Yeah, because there's two, and the same thing with the H.
Yeah. I'll be honest, if we had to pay 50 cents per transaction, it's gonna save us a whole lot of time on trying to get bank reconciliations done, and a more time to be in it, which is the goal.
But I don't, but I guess what I think is, is it one or the other? Because they got, I mean, are they get?
Are they gonna get it twice? Yeah. From what I understood at the meeting with the gentleman, and from what brochures he sent me, it's all on the residence. But then when I looked at the contract, then I was confused. But again, if we had to pay 50 cents?
You have a little 50 percentage, if you're looking at the percentage as well.
I don't believe, I know, and I know, I looked at it too, I don't believe that to be the case. But if you wanna want me to get ahold of him and clarify, I'd absolutely do that.
Yeah, have a, have a sound.
Okay, so the only issue for this is he, we cannot move forward getting our name to sort of township on the list with BSNA to install this new BSNA. So when we have tasks, then we'll have payments. And it's new, and it's pretty popular, so we can add it to the special meeting, because I want to get our name on that list, but you can't add us to the contract.
I heard somebody asked, is there an additional cost per year?
No, it says, do not worry about fees for setup, monthly minimums, statements, tokenization, PSAT compliance, chargeback, or batches. Eliminate kinder unexpected fees, it's all included with BSNA.
I guess I just, I would like to see that clarified. I mean, I, I guess I, I would be willing to make a motion that we go and, as I said, providing that not charge to both municipal and the resident.
Yeah.
Supposed to be, when we have this, it's not supposed to be.
Right, exactly, it's supposed to be making things easier for us.
Otherwise, it's just great.
It's the easiest way, but.
And I, I noticed we have a strike S700 terminal, do we, is that a rental, or do we own that?
We own.
Okay, so that, and that's $350.
Correct. Kelsey? Sorry, you still doing that, I don't know, I'm just bringing this up now, we need to see if you can have it over there too.
Oh, that'd be nice. Yeah, that would be really nice. Definitely should be.
So when I talk to him to clarify this, I'll also see if I can get, if the library can pay for it, if you can have their own terminal.
That'd be great. Yeah. We've been waiting for a while, and it's up there.
Yes, you got it.
So dare we make a motion contingent on the fee structure? Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
You were reading.
Okay, so we have a motion, I assume, to accept this contingent on the fee structure, do we have a second? Okay. What, any other questions? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed?
All right, in the board packet, you will see last summer's last summer's bill for KCI. So KCI is the company that we have used for several years. We, I've sent them our digital electronic taxes, and it's all set and done. And then they print the bills and mail them for us, saving us money on having to do all that work, because we have so many people. But the one that's in the board packet, it was last year, and Mr. Kramer used to do newsletter, and included that in. That's nothing, we're not gonna do that, so the bid's a little high from the 14th. But if I was, wish I would have shown you, it's, it's a four-page brochure of all the townships, all the cities, all the, all these municipalities that used that KCI to do their bills. So they have a great reputation, and I would really like to continue using them. And not necessarily, it doesn't have to be a motion, because we've used them before, it's not a contract or anything, it's just yeah, informational more than anything else. So there's a good job opportunity, if you want to start your own.
I think it'll be good.
Question? Sewer construction bill, if you were here for the sewer meeting, well, we didn't go for those, we didn't go for those. Okay. This is going to be confusing, you ready, Chris? So, we have Elmer's Gravity bill for an amount of $178,439.87. And that, yeah, that's the reflects the work, all the work performed to date. That's phase one, Gravity. We also have, excuse me, also have phase one low-pressure system from Matt's Underground. And that amount is $61,348.63. Then we have the wastewater treatment plant expansion from Brian Trevor's Construction. That amount, this amount is $416,183.60. This is funded through USDA and EGO as part of phase one, and from USDA and EPA as part of phase two. USDA phase one share of this pay request is $10,640. The EGO share of this pay request, this is on the equalization search tank, is $127,559.35. And in agreement, in accordance with our EPA grant agreement, they fund 62.95% of phase two project costs, up to the maximum of $3.5 million. So the EPA share of this request is $174,991.80, leaving the USDA phase two share at $102,993.17. Thankfully, Steve has all this written down for us. Okay, now we get to the change order that Steve talked about. This is for phase one low-pressure system. To add a pay item for an estimated, what, I forgot to ask, a CYD for subgrade. Can you get yard? Don't know. For a total cost of $9,000, if you recall, if you were here earlier or at the sewer meeting, they had, they have soil that had to be replaced out at CDC. So that's $9,000. And that's on here, very wet. And then the line item to pay the AT&amp;T for relocating that underground telecom line is $7,851.64. So the total net increase in cost for the contract is $16,851.24. The contingency fund for phase one currently has $184,926.33 available. And Performance Engineers was requesting approval of that change order. And we also, oh, geez, hold on. Performance Engineers, we have an invoice, the coverage period is March 30th, 2025 through April 26th, 2025. Engineering Services, Construction Inspections, fees of $8,352.30. We have an invoice for Performance Engineering, March 30th, 2025 through April 26th, 2025. Engineering Services, Construction Inspection, this is phase two, pardon me, the $8,352.30, this is phase one. Phase two is $13,123.45. Okay. So, motion on the table to approve the sewer construction bills for phase one, phase two, change orders, and the wastewater treatment plant, and including Performance Engineering Services.
I'll say.
Thank you. And any discussion? Question? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed?
The only thing I want to bring up, that, no, no, no. The ones that might set, they could know, we opened the door, what is it?
The EPA grant. The additional.
We've gotta get 50 bucks or something else there. I think they're gonna get $92,000.
That's everything, but we have to get 50 bucks in there, even for store. I'm the other kid. Another bad. I'm sorry. We want to put 50 more times. Okay.
She's, oh, okay, she had talked to Tiffany this morning.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is just that one you saw this afternoon, and I didn't see her, she emailed me and said, when are you gonna be putting the funds in there?
All right. Cool. She, she called, she got me at the, at the bank this morning, so.
We will follow up on that tomorrow. Chris and I submitted that, we reversed our request yesterday, Monday. And we targeted Wednesday for a drop date. This afternoon, we've been complying with email after email from our contact at the EPA, supplying him with the 300. So hopefully, he's going to walk it through, if that's the way I interpreted Andrew's most recent email, that once we comply with all of this, we can walk it through, approve that.
And I'll transfer 50 dollars to you there.
Yeah. So we can touch base later. Yeah. And then once we, once that is all done, hopefully that will.
Take it from the additional R U.
Okay. Okay, wastewater treatment plant generator control board. Oh, sorry, okay, well, that kind of goes hand in hands with sewer construction. Silversmith. One of the things that we quickly realized, that with the sewer system, and everything that's going into it, we have grinder pumps, we have all sorts of 20 toys, we have to keep track of all this. So we spoke with Performance Engineering, and they recommended that we look at two bits of asset, what's called the asset management software. Chris and I demoed and Tammy weighed in on those. We, Silver, we, the most, right, what's the other? Right. They were from one of the Carolinas. It was online. The other company that was recommended to us was Silversmith Data, and they're from Gaylord. They got their start in the oil and gas industry. They handle Gaylord's, handle Gaylord's fire hydrants, they handle the sewer plants and water systems in Tom Caskin, and along the Harbor Springs. There's a lot of those. Yeah. They use a GPS system with, they, we can, it can use, it's held in the cloud, so we can have any number of devices, handheld devices, tablets, phones, laptops. They use a GPS system, it will interface with our ads belts for phase one, phase two, will list the treatment plant assets there, with the growers that we have, and experiments coming in, everything that's out there. We did find for the original commercial, which Steve was gonna take or will copy and get to him and see if they can use. The nice thing is, it also has built into it a work order system, so if somebody calls and says, hey, my cell is popping up, or my laundry, my washer doesn't drain, we can put in a work order, and it will go right to Doug's phone, and he will run out there and take a look and see what happened. Similarly, this, this asset management program will take any and all assets, the women's club, the snowflakes, the flower barrels, the benches that we have all over town, the bike racks. On the sidewalk for DVA, where we have the universal accessibility, where there's the, where's Dan?
The VVA.
Yes, yes, you can, we can record all of those, and then you can put in there, oh, you know, we'll put in the bank model the year it's installed. Our generators, that's generators. Anything that you see that is an asset, vehicles, trailers, that is owned and used by this township can be put in there, and we can then get into a maintenance program. And, and so, and we'll have that in perpetuity, and then something is sold. We recently sold the trailer. You need to just remember that we sold it, or this weekend actually will go down. I think it's a good investment. It is initially, it's to buy it with, the software itself, initial setup is $6,592. There is an annual recurrent fee of $2,185. If we purchase Silversmith with one GPS device, that's an additional $2,700. So we have two options here. We can purchase just the Silversmith program, and then we will send them out with a tape measure and a compass to find all the different parts and pieces. Or we can use the GPS. And we will pay $8,292. So that's, so.
And we can use Grant One.
There you go, yes, thank you, yes. There is built into phase two an administration portion, and I wish I had looked at that earlier today.
Another problem?
Yeah. So this will be covered under the phase two grant. Motion on the table to purchase, to enter into a contract to purchase Silversmith data information system with the GPS. I think that is gonna be critical. Thank you. Any other, any questions? The gentleman who demoed this for us said, because we're so close, if we had an issue, they can help, they can send a backup to help us. They're, they seem very. They're, they seem very user friendly. Any questions? All in favor? Generator control, did everyone make the difference?
Is it the common sales service?
Yes. This is the big one, the $6,000. Yep, okay, this is the big one. Right, we have that, we have the little one, that's the, yeah, okay. So as I said in the early this meeting or the sewer meeting, we have a couple of generators. During the storm, we realized that a plug had been changed. We did a workaround on that, but then when we were going to use it, the control panel, everything is computerized now. The benefits of how we do about that, it did not work. I, I'm, we've got it, let's use it, let's get it fixed. It, it costs $6,193 to do it. Motion on the table to fix the generator.
I'll support it. Fix the generator.
Okay. Discussion. There's been some discussion that, there is an after, there's a market for a new generator. It, it's. It seems strange to me that we now have two generators that control panels appear. I don't know if they're the same, maybe not all, I didn't think to ask Tammy, but we're seeing, no, they're not, okay. We may be able to sell this. Get something different, smaller, different, less complicated.
That's what we're hoping, it's not his favorite program to make it operate.
Right, so, but to do that, we have to fix it, and we still have to have something that works, correct?
Is this the, is this, is this the big one?
The big one.
That has to be on the trailer? But could you replace it with something smaller?
Who would hope that? Like give something that just. Doesn't have all the capabilities to program out.
Just work in.
Somebody else who is working to what we know.
Just to go what now?
Yeah.
I'll resolve it.
Exactly, yeah.
And then, like we were talking about earlier, to get it on a regular maintenance program where it runs once a month. On a load. Does what it's supposed to instead of what it's supposed to.
Yeah, exactly. We have the equipment, let's keep it in the working order, keep it maintained. And if we need to do something different, we'll address that, but for now, we need to have it fixed because we don't want that, we need a backup. Any other questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Emergency expenses. I didn't really write that up. It was, so here's the discussion that happened a month ago, as you all recall, we had the well pump. The pump at the well, community, the well that services the wastewater treatment plant, a commerce part. We had, we called the special board meeting to get that fixed. There was been a suggestion that maybe we need a policy. We looked through, I didn't see a policy on emergency expenses. I made some motions. I don't mind doing a quickie. Three minute, three minute special meeting to say, do you want to do this or not? What are your thoughts on?
Yes, probably it depends on what the situation is. If something's delayed, it can, or more hours.
Yeah. And I would add to that, a dollar amount.
Yeah, but I mean, there might be something that has to be addressed now.
True.
And. You know, I don't know exactly how we had it, it had always been, we're the supervisor. Had the authority to. I don't remember how much, I, but.
So.
Like an infrequent emergency type, that's why you label that. And it needs to be taken care of, we don't have time to postpone meetings. I don't think the supervisor, we'd freak the supervisor. We'll have to come up with the amount.
Yeah. So do we want to say yes, but we're going to work on it and bring it up at the general meeting? Okay, right, so I don't know that it means a motion. No, just that we're open. Budget update. We did get that this afternoon, we are working, we will be working frantically on the bu, on the budget. If you don't know, Parks is meeting tomorrow to have a workshop on ours, is that open to the public?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be really exciting. Exciting, sure.
And then, and then we'll start working on our budgets.
The D B A will do that.
Yeah. Again, just informational, and then Liz at equalization, but she wasn't coming, was waiting for information to come from the state, which she finally just got. Okay, and what we've all been waiting for, road grime. Yes, we are doing road grime. No, it probably will only not be twice a year, Doug. June 18th.
Ooh, those, those bad gravel dirt roads.
You dare to either side for weather.
They put this grind down on it and it keeps the dust.
That's where we're penciled into the scheduling.
Okay, so June 18th, 2025, a day or two with a room on either side, correct? So. The amount. Using road grinders, oh, last year, it's, what is it, 35 cents per gallon? Last year in June of 2024, we spent $20,957.50. And then we did it again at the end of July. I do not think we'll be doing it again. We're going to do it once, one of them. So. Do we, so the motion on the table is due, is do I have approval to sign the contract to, with the road permission and American Waste Inc. doing businesses more than A1 Industrial to ensure your contract is not for road.
I'll support you.
Thank you, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you, and. E S T A. The E S T A policy on. I've been reading over the documentation in the laws on the handbook that they sent out, it's called E S T A, P S T A. And I'll, just for the employee, because the Michigan has a new law where thirty, every thirty hours, an employee works again an hour, same time, on an equal basis. So. I'm going to work with the treasurer, who we're going to put together and go through and revise our township housing handbook. Just to make sure that we are in line with that. We already have the poster that needs to be hung in the break room on order, it'll be here soon. And then the flyers that each employee needs to receive. Won't be in that same order, they'll get those involved. Our office assistant, Karen Becker, she's worked with BSNA on the payroll end of it to get everything loaded up into BSNA, so we're probably going to improve through each. So that's how we. So once Lorna and I get that policy updated. Do you think we can, shall we shoot for Jim? Is that that? For, I'm sorry.
That's all full time. You said first thirty hours. Was there any employee that was not doing that?
I don't like their officials.
The portion of occurring, but we've got to get the policy and the letter speed out, it's already in there.
Now, any Parks employees? That will be subject to E S T A? You might have one or two or more? Yeah. Okay, so again, just more informational, but I'm sure you guys have. Yeah, thank you. All right. Audit firm. I spoke with Neil, now we're back for our C P A, and as far as point out for an R F P on, in audit firm right now, that's a big no, because we're still in agreement with our contract with Gatebridge through June 30th, 2025, and we already have the engagement letter that they will be conducting the audit for us for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. So at this time, going on our R F P is not required, so we can't do it. But after this one, after this audit for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 25. We could, we could throw it off just to see what's. And cemetery services. In the meeting packet, we're looking at. Bruce Thompson wants an increase in his fee for doing the grave digging. Let's see, last year, I don't want to work the whole thing, but last year, it was for a full casket, it was 600 plus $30 township fee. This year, he wants 700 plus a $30 township fee. Pre-made is 350, 300 plus $30 township fee, this year he wants 350. On weekends or holidays, which includes the day before the holiday and the day after the holiday. Last year, he was at 700 plus $30 for the township. Now he wants 800 plus $30 for the township, so we. Definitely look at all of that.
I don't have the calculation right yet, but I know, nobody doing it. It's 17%. Increase. What did, yeah, he digs, it was 500 to 600. What about, I see the $400 for small casket children.
Yeah.
The, what's the one, more on that?
And just that was, that's what, what I was explaining was a pasture. So. We collect it. It's painted front, but it's really. Yeah, and we like to. We teach a $30 industry.
We set that.
Yes, correct.
And we set the burial plot.
I'm sorry?
We set the rates for the burial.
The plots? Oh, I see, okay, great.
Are we all in agreement with him on this, or is it? That's, we have to pay, that's Richard.
Well, he's charging 600, go charge your mother, it was 300.
Just for the burial plot.
Oh, just for the plot, okay.
This is just a plot, okay, I'm back.
Yeah, so the question is, how much negotiation is there? I mean, that's another one, somebody gets past you, you're laying your family, you have to pay 300 for the plot, and you want 700 plus our 30. Yeah.
I would like to get to check on him, do this, and, and, in the area.
Yeah.
To see where.
I think that's fair.
I think he does cross.
Well, and we have some, we have some data from other, from Hellman and. Wilson, Benson, Law. Yeah. So do we want to table this until June?
I guess we should.
And we'll let him know that we're, we're investigating other areas.
Especially with the 17%. Four years in a row, higher than 17 last year.
Yeah.
It's like 20.
Yeah. Okay, all right, so again, so last table. Okay, and then this last item, I think, was just, this department. Yeah, too. Construction project stuff. He wanted to pay the BOMA bill. Oh, yes. All right, this BOMA at the end, the BOMA contract, the $49,005. That's the project in the basement in the roof department, it's part of the community. Building, right, thank you. Down through the ground. And $49,005, I've been down there, it looks fabulous. Ask me to take them a tour, it's great. Yeah, cool, so motion to approve paying that bill. All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion passes. Okay.
Doesn't anything happen?
No. No, no leader like this. Holy smokes. Okay, how about comments on anything? Come on up.
I just have a quick comment. And I wasn't here for the sewer meeting. I'm on the Parks Commission, my name's Jill Hawk. And I'm just wondering, when they say, is Elmer still doing more after they do the restoration down here? Or is there, are they going to be done? Because the problem, the question I have is, there are two big mounds of stuff down there by the hill beach. It's a big mess, we're already having families down there. This weekend, there were families, there were people fishing today, there were cars down there. Our parking lot is half the size. Which is not very big, anyway. So I'm just trying to figure out. We may be moved by Memorial Day, doesn't sound like a good answer to me. And I would like to know if they're still going to be doing things after, then maybe they need to move all their stuff to one of those other areas that is opening up for all the other construction.
They should, yeah, they should be finishing up in the next two weeks. They're putting gravel down, putting, picking up gravel, sweeping after gravel off and putting dirt down.
So that stuff that's sitting there in the mounds are, is going to be used and gone?
I have put down there, Jill, I was here last Friday, I haven't done it yet this week. So.
Do you know, Doug?
What's there will be gone very quickly.
Yes.
Okay.
And then the first couple of days. Putting in stuff along the asphalt.
Doug, is there sand down there?
Is there sand?
Is there a pile of sand that they can just throw to the? Would that be nice?
But no, they'll go through that really quick, did you have more stuff piled out at the pit on a dirty road that they'll be getting into?
I'm just, you know, it's just becoming really nice this week and really nice next week, and we have to be careful about what these people are driving into and all of that down there.
Okay.
Do you find your burying name?
No, we're going to scrub it out whenever it's going to be needed. I missed two things for the Parks. Why, we're trying to, and I don't know how to do this, so if anybody can help me, we're trying to sell one of the old trucks and a trailer. And. I don't know where to begin, do I come to you guys, do we, what do we do?
We need to post them, some bids, sealed bids, and then at the end of the time, high number gets it.
So does that go on the just for a township? So I need somebody to post that form. And where does the proceeds go to? Who owns it?
Then we'll go right back into the city.
Right, so this parks.
Okay. It's all.
Is the trailer parked, or we're talking the police department trailer? Because that's what I was told.
Well, it is, policeman, Martin, has given the trailer to us.
And Elizabeth of Stargate Motown is having, they're having a fishing tournament June 1st.
And Elizabeth from Star Gate Hotel is having, they're having a fishing tournament June first. And last year she paid her party for their, her people that stayed at her place. And she wants to know, but they get around about number, and she paid more than what the people were there. So she asked if we could come up with a different system. And I don't know if that's under us. Lauren is taking the boat.
But she thought, oh, she paid for them to park it at the one?
At the Marina Lodge, yes. And she had to pay, we'll say thirty cars, which she only had twenty-five. So I suggest, and this is just a suggestion, that maybe the envelopes, we just put the free by five card and say pay by Star Gate. And then once we get a total, total, we let her know what it is and then she can pay the cost.
It's a one day?
Yes, I made sure that it's a one day.
June first.
June first, that it's just a one day thing. Because if it was two, then we'd have to do it two days. And she wants to pick up the envelopes ahead of time. And so her people can fill them out and just have them in the car and the other one. She can just keep them and actually turn them in to us, they don't have to run them back.
Right, exactly, right. And then we'll add up how many they were and then.
Charge them that way.
Yeah, whatever, you know how much you.
Oh, that goes on to other two things that I, yes, apologize. Mr. McGuinness?
Looks like it's going to be a park trifecta. My name's Patrick McGuinness, I'm also a Parks Commissioner. And I have concerns about an upcoming issue concerning the in-between in the condos that are being built there. With public docks down there that are open to the public and they were put in with the intention of benefiting the businesses and thus for our township. But the in-between now running pontoons and jet skis and having short-term rentals, we're going to see a massive increase in docky juice. Because at this time, no signs of public docks limiting the time that a boat can be there, whether they can be there overnight or not. I foresee short-time rentals bringing their boats up and wanting to tie up there overnight. And for long periods of time, which will compete the purpose of a public dock. I would like the Township Board to look into it and maybe take steps to get signs put up for some type of control. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's in one of the ordinance.
Well, that's what we were wondering if there was ordinance that needed to be made or if there was an ordinance, if there was, and that needs to be.
It's suggested on all the signs that I just said, the garden said there is no ordinance. Overnight working.
Okay, okay. I thought that we had one.
Like your green doctors.
The green doctors down there too.
Yeah, I checked it, was it fifteen, I don't know, was it?
I thought the sheriff.
Really old, that was.
I mean, on the water, oh.
Yep. Grill in the back. Back on the parks. Okay, I just wanted to announce that I know there are a number of people in this room who have been working on this thirteen-sol tier, there's another one. The middle one. The big one. And in this room, and I met with Mr. Ramsey. And, okay, was that last week, Friday? I think it was Friday. And he's now that's the wealth permit that we've been working on him to help with that a lot. And they will be in the next couple of weeks giving them out for the ones that they've been down. We can put a water fountain in like we want to do. And that was the last, I think the last big thing that we needed to do. And it's a big deal because Mr. Ramsey is actually the donor for that. Very, thank you. Yes.
I just forgot to mention. No, wait. The DDA is also sponsoring the. Music festival.
Oh.
Summer music festival again. We do not have a location until this coming meeting. Then we will post that.
And when's the next meeting? Which one is that?
Uh, next, next Monday.
Okay.
The nineteenth, I believe it is.
Open to the public?
Yeah, yeah, more than married.
Yeah. Thanks, Dan. Any other comments? Right, motion to adjourn? Oh, board comments, sorry. Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, yes. All in favor of, aye. Nine o'clock.
Okay, but you gotta stand up and look.
Yeah.
Don't worry, you're looking. You're a cold, you're a monster.